I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice Chair Morsey. Commissioner Balma.
President.
And Commissioner Hayes, I believe is participating via Zoom.
Still, I can't see her. Just got a little audio connecting to audio there.
We'll come back to her to confirm. Commissioner Goodkind is also participating via Zoom.
President.
Commissioner Custer indicated she would be absent tonight. Also Commissioner Rains is absent tonight. And we'll go back to Commissioner Hayes. Is your audio working? Can we hear you?
See you.
Is she muted?
Yeah, she's unmuted.
Okay, I think Commissioner Hayes is with us. So Commissioner Hayes, are you present then?
I am present. I just had no audio for some reason.
Thank you. So Vice Chair Morsey, you have four commissioners tonight. You have two in the chambers, yourself and Commissioner Balma, and then you have two via Zoom, Commissioners Goodkind and Commissioner Hayes. So you do have a quorum. It takes a majority vote, so it'd be of those present, so it'd be three out of four to take an action tonight.
Very good. Do we have any matters not on the agenda tonight?
We have one oral communication made without advance request. This is Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Arlene Hammerschmidt, ruralish Fire Mountain. So I am here to speak about what's in red. This is the last Planning Commission meeting that participating via Zoom will be available. Starting in October 2021, meetings will not be available to the public via Zoom. Now, I know that this body did not make this decision, and I'm making a public statement regarding it all the same. How can the city take away public access to decision-making bodies? Taking away Zoom access is not good. It sends the message, city, third floor, who may or may not hear this at this time, it sends the message that public input is not wanted, and that is not good. It drops the trust level in city processes, and we're wondering now why so many communities do not trust City Hall. Well, here's one shining example. If we can do it during COVID, and many people still fear COVID and will not come here for city anything, any commission meeting, city council, anything that happens to be held, they would be safer at home, as well as busy people can access if with the right app on their cellphone and be present and see what's going on. So I urge city leaders and decision-makers to reverse this decision. If we can do it, we don't take it away. We should be increasing public access to the decision-making bodies. So please change this over, switch it over. Thank you.
So City Planner Hunt, is that something that came down from the council? Is the council also eliminating Zoom at their next meetings?
Mr. Chairman and other commissioners, the Planning Commission meeting protocols are established through the city clerk's office and indirectly the city council, so we follow their lead. So this is per direction from the city clerk's office.
We'll relay your message.
We can relay the message?
Yes.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
I know there were many emails sent in support of keeping Zoom as well.
Thank you. If there's no other matters on the agenda, the next item is approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. So if I could get a motion for that approval?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Could we get a second, please?
Second.
I think that's Planning Commissioner Hayes?
Goodkind.
Goodkind, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Goodkind. Okay, since you made the second, how do you vote?
Yay.
Okay. Planning Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Balma?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So there's no items on the consent calendar, no items on the transportation calendar, so I guess we can go right into the public hearing. So we could have disclosures on tonight's agenda number four. Planning Commissioner Balma?
I got the staff report, a bunch of emails, letters from a lawyer, and I know the site very well.
Same for me. Planning Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes, I drove by the site and quite familiar with the area, read the staff report and read the public communications. Thank you.
Thank you. And Planning Commissioner Hayes?
Echoing the other two planning commissioners, also very familiar with the area and read all of the different email correspondences and letters that we've received.
Thank you. So with that, then we have the staff presentation. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. I'm gonna do my juggling act there. Good evening, chairperson, commissioners. I'm Scott Ninegeal from the Planning Division, here to present Agenda Item Number Four for the proposal to construct a mixed-use density bonus development with 54 residential condominium units, five of those being dedicated to very low income levels, and an attached bottom floor 3,244 square foot commercial space located on approximately .9 acre site at 1602 South Coast Highway. The applicant is Hallmark Development Corporation, and they are present tonight. The request is for a tentative map to create the one-lot subdivision for the 54 airspace condominium development, like I said earlier, with the ground floor commercial, all pursuant to Article Six of the Oceanside Subdivision Ordinance. They are also asking for a development plan to demolish the existing automotive center with several associated outbuildings in order to develop this mixed-use development. The development will consist, like I said, of 54 condominium dwelling units. They'll range from 1,000 to approximately 1,600 square feet. They'll be primarily two-bedroom, two baths. There will also be some three-bedroom units with two baths as well, and they also have a few, two units with, I'm sorry, five units with a three-bedroom and office design. The ground floor commercial, they'll have three tenant suites, which will range from 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. The regular coastal permit is to create the vertical mixed-use project within the LCP, Local Coastal Program, within the jurisdictional boundaries. The regular coastal permit is required to be processed due to the location of the site within the non-applicable coastal area of the local coastal program. And lastly, the density bonus is to allow an increase in density by 35% above the maximum density of one unit per 1,000 square feet. The maximum potential density for the site is approximately 40 dwelling units, that's 39.64 rounded up to 40, in exchange for reserving 11% of the units, which will be approximately five of these units will be dedicated to very low income. With that, the project will be allowed a 35% density bonus that would provide 14 additional units, so 14 plus 40 will be 54 units in total. 49 of those units will be sold for market rate, while the remaining five units will be allocated for the very low-income households per the state density bonus law. The affordable units will be proportional to the overall project in unit size and will be dispersed throughout the project and will have access to all the amenities available to the market rate units. State density bonus law requires that local governments provide density bonuses and other incentives to developers of affordable housing who commit to providing certain percentages of dwelling units to persons of these income levels. State law also entitles projects to a specific number of incentives and concessions that allow for the provision of the affordable units to be financially feasible for the development. These are actually known as waivers. The applicant is asking for two waivers, one of which is a request for relief of the 15-foot front yard setback requirement on South Freeman Street, which is directly to the rear of South Coast Highway, of the rear of this property. Project proposes a waiver of the front yard and landscape area requirement on South Freeman to be at least, or at zero-foot setback. The property is considered to be a double-frontage lot based on the ordinance, based on the property being fronting on two public streets. The site would otherwise be required to provide a 15-foot front yard setback along South Freeman Street with a minimum five-feet deep landscape setback, based on the development pattern of the area on South Freeman Street. South Freeman functions primarily as an alley to a majority of the developments within this area, not only the commercial developments along Coast Highway, but also the residential that also front on, or rear onto Freeman. So this waiver is necessary due to the constraints that limit the development from double-frontage yard setback along South Freeman Street, and the landscape setback would require a reduction in the buildable area site and the parking and number of residential units. So therefore, this would physically preclude the construction of the project with the number of units allowed within the density bonus provision. This is the reason for the waiver. And the second waiver is a request from the relief of the zoning ordinance Section 1140C and Section 3015BE for planting boxes or masonry planters to extend more than two feet into the required front yard and corner side yard setbacks along South Coast Highway and Moore Street. So in order to develop the number of units for the density bonus and also meet the city's stormwater requirements, the project is proposing BMP planters that are over the 42 These planters will be architecturally enhanced with stone veneer and be planted and irrigated to comply with the landscape manual. This waiver is necessary because of the compliance of the projection into the yards for the planter boxes. If they were required to comply, this would reduce the number of units, therefore not meet the state density bonus provisions. That's the reason for the waiver. Here's an image of the site. It's located to the southeast, on the southeast corner of Moore Street and South Coast Highway. It's Zone C2, general commercial. It is surrounded by multifamily condominiums, which is Zoned R3 to the north, Commercial Market, which is Zoned CL, limited commercial to the northeast. And to the east, directly to the east of the site, you have office, a commercial office site, which I believe is being reconstructed to single-family, but it's Zoned CP, professional commercial, and single-family homes. Just to the south, you have commercial retail suites, the thrift store, and some additional, I think there's a, I believe there's a vehicle, car sales there. And directly to the west, you have hotel, future coffee and brewery use, as well as a car wash, which is also Zoned C2. A little background on the site, project, like I said earlier, the project's site consists of six legal lots under one assessor parcel number totaling .9 acres in sight. Site currently has a 10,255 square foot automotive service center, showroom, garage, warehouse, along with a 3,896 square foot service bay and asphalt parking lot. Per the submitted historical analysis prepared by Kristi Hawthorne, the commercial structures do not meet the criteria to be classified as holding any type of historical significance. Property is located, like I said earlier, in the non-applicable area of the coastal zone, and this proposed development will require a coastal development permit. Site is less than a half mile from the Coast Highway Sprinter Station and a little over a mile from the Oceanside Transit Center. These are some images of the existing site. The proposed mixed-use development would create 54 residential condominiums with ground floor commercial, which would implement the goals and objectives of the general plan to be in compliance with the state density bonus law. The project meets all development standards with the exception of the two waivers that are requested. The proposed development would be compatible with the surrounding development in terms of land use, density, and lot size. The proposed four-story mixed-use development is consistent with many of the existing and proposed mixed-use developments along South Coast Highway. The existing development within the neighborhoods range from one- to two-story single-family and two- or three-story multifamily complexes. Project would enhance its surroundings through landscaping, architectural design, and high-quality Here's an image of the floor plan. I'll freeze through this. I believe the applicant has more of an extensive presentation on this. Here's the second floor, which would be primarily just the condominium units, the third floor as well, and the fourth floor. Fourth floor has a corner section where they do have a common amenity, which we work with the applicant on providing some setback from the corners intersection, provides some relief in the massing, also provides a nice viewing area and balcony space for the resident. One positive thing about this project is we worked with the applicant on not providing any type of rooftop decks, so they will not have any rooftop penthouse elevator shafts that are typically proposed in these types of development. It'll just be straight four stories. And they will implement solar on the roof, as well as provide all their HVAC equipment and all their other equipment, which would be screened by parapet walls. Here's an image of the elevations. The project would enhance its surroundings through the landscaping and architectural design and the use of high-quality materials. Like I said earlier, the project draws from a lot of the eclectic and recently developed info projects that have been developed within the area. We specifically worked with the architect on softening the architecture and the colors to provide more of an urban beach theme. There were some public meetings that were, and these items were discussed in the meetings. Also, this, the architecture that's provided, provides a lot of articulation, popouts and fenestrations that also provide a lot of relief from the bulk enassing of the project. Here's a rendering from the corner. We also worked with the architect on providing a better streetscape here. As you can see, the open area, outdoor area wraps around the building, which provides more of a friendlier pedestrian feel, as well as providing some additional landscape elements to soften the bulk enassing on the corner as it trickles into the residential And this would be the image, as you see, from the south elevation. Project site is located within, like I said, the C2 general commercial zone, which allows for commercial office and mixed-use developments with the approval of a use permit. Since this project is a density bonus project, state density bonus law, Section 65915F5, states that granting density bonus shall not constitute any approvals of any discretionary entitlements, therefore use permits, so thus a use permit is not required, nor is it needed for approval. As far as development standards go, the project meets the development standards with the exception of the two waivers for the setbacks and for the encroachment of the BMP planters. Other than that, the project is conforming. They are providing, I'll go more into the parking here, but the total required parking for the residential units in the commercial space is 75 parking spaces, as noted in the bottom of the table. A common parking garage will provide a total of 77 shared parking, consisting of 11 commercial parking spaces. 66 will be dedicated to residential and three to handicap van accessible. There will be some HOA regulations that will allow for some of the commercial parking spaces to be utilized on the off-hours for some of the guests of the residents, and that will be established through a management plan. Also, the project does meet the VMT analysis. The project is calculated to generate 390 additional trips, which is less than 1,000 additional trips, the threshold for a VMT analysis. Therefore, the project is screened out from further VMT analysis, and it's not required. Also, the project is within a half-mile of transit, which also is an incentive for the As I stated earlier, here's a more detailed analysis of the parking. For Article 30, Site Regulations 3032, Affordable Housing Density, vehicular parking ratios, the parking requirement for this, based on the affordable requirements, is .5 spaces per bedroom. As you can see here, they are required to have 75 spaces, which they provide 77. This is actually more than what is typically required per the zoning ordinance, which is one space per unit. And like I said earlier, they will have the reciprocal agreement established through the HOA for the 11 additional spaces that can be utilized in the evening hours. And also, this project does meet the EV Section Article 30, and they are installing 10 EV residential charging stations within the parking garage. To meet the public policy for community outreach, the applicant sent out a mailer to all the owners and occupants within 1,500 feet of the project site, within the city's interested, also the city's interested parties, describing the project, and also sending out opportunities for the public to reach out to the applicant with any questions. The South Oceanside Neighborhood Group expressed some concern. They asked if they could participate and attend one of their meetings, which they did. The meeting was conducted via Zoom. Several comments were made regarding building height, the project just not being compatible with the area, parking concerns, architecture compatibility, and the bulk and scale, and just the intensity of the project. Another Zoom meeting was provided, which I also attended, and it was, a lot of the similar concerns were brought up. We noted some of those, and I worked with the applicant on addressing a lot of the concerns. Like I said, some of the major concerns were architecture, orientation of the commercial outdoor areas, color, bulk, and the scale. And the planning commissioners received an email regarding a change to the resolution. This would add a condition regarding the CFD, the Community Facilities District, and it will read as follows. This will be Condition 118. Project may be required to annex into the citywide Public Safety Committee's Facilities District once it is formed and annual rates are established by the city council. If applicable, annexation into the city public SFD shall occur prior to occupancy for the first dwelling unit. In the event that the city council elects not to form a CFD in its discretion, this condition is satisfied. If the CFD has not been formed and special tax put in place by the time a certificate of occupancy is ready to be issued, this condition is satisfied, and no units within the project will be subject to the CFD. We've provided you with a letter from the applicant addressing their concerns, and they will bring up their opposition to the condition, if that is still known. So based on the following presentation, staff reviewed the project based on the following. General Plan Land Use Compliance. This project achieves a balance of residential and commercial land uses and is consistent with the Coast Highway Vision, provides a good transition between existing medium-density, single-family, residential, and the commercial uses within this area. The proposed project would assist in meeting the project housing demand. The applicant intends to provide the affordable units onsite. And like I said earlier, it complies with all zoning regulations with the exception of the two density bonus waivers. And the project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance. So with that, staff recommends that Planning Commission by motion confirm issuance of a CEQA exemption and adopt Resolution 2021P30, and also add the new condition, which was read into the record as Condition 118, approving the tentative map, coastal permit, development plan, and density bonus to construct the mixed-use development. This concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. The applicant would like to make themselves known. I believe they also have a presentation.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any questions from the planning commissioners to staff? Commissioner Balma?
Scott, on the citywide public safety, the CFD, is this a new district that's just been formed? Like, how has any other projects been affected by this? Kind of like, what does this cost like? You're not going to be able to answer the idea of what this might cost each individual purchaser of a condominium, and if it affects the low-income or just the ones that are market. So I guess, just tell me a little bit more about the Community Facilities District.
So it's a citywide annexable SFD requirement to pay for any public safety, future public safety impacts. The fire department has required that any project over 16 units be required to pay into this. Jeff may, I may need Jeff's assistance on the actual rate amount, if he knows what it is. But yeah, it's somewhat new. There's been a few projects that have been conditioned with this specific condition, so...
Didn't we have a sales tack increase, like, not that long ago, maybe a couple years ago? I thought that was going to pay for public safety, and this is now another one? Or is that? I don't know. I'm just kind of asking about this.
The intent of the CFD is to have new development pay for the new impacts to public services. So I think, I believe it was originated by the fire department, but it'd probably be larger than that. The district has not been formed yet. The way the condition is worded, should it be formed prior to the CVO, then they would be obligated to join the district. I don't know the estimated cost to each of the property owners.
Thank you.
Jonathan, you're free to speak.
Oh, great. Thank you, Commissioner Balma and members of the Planning Commission. This is Jonathan Brago, Deputy City Manager, Development Services Director. Sorry, I'm out of the office today and not suitable for cameras, so you're just going to get my voice this evening. I can answer a little bit of, a few questions that you might have on the CFD. As currently drafted, and again, this is still in draft form, we are actually still working this through the process to get it approved through the city council, but as currently drafted, the annual assessment for a multifamily residence would be $417 per year, per unit. It would be tacked on to the... It would be tacked on to their property tax bill. Essentially, it's a Mallory Street district, you know, is another word for a CFD. And it would cover both fire services, police services, and lifeguard services. Of course, those are the rates that have been recommended by our consultant as we go through the process of bringing it forward to City Council for consideration. Those rates could presumably change, but those are the recommended rates at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Borrego. Commissioner Goodkind, did you have any questions?
I did, for Scott. Scott, could you put the slide back up showing the south elevation, please? Trying to get a view of the South Freeman Street side of this project. I think that was the only slide that had that view.
Commissioner Goodkind, you're are you able to see the elevation there?
No, I'm only seeing myself. Let's see, I can Yeah, there you go.
Sorry about that.
So that's taken from South Freeman Street? That's South Freeman Street right there, running in, at the foreground of the photo?
Yes, this is taken from South Freeman, looking north.
Can you put that back up? Okay, thanks. Okay. So my question about the waiver for South Freeman Street setback, the explanation that I heard you say was that that was necessary because of the density bonus. Is that right?
That's correct. They're able to apply for waivers from development standards. So the typical setback here, I'd have to look it up, but yeah, I said in the presentation, would push the building further back. And they're asking for a zero essentially, Freeman's looked at as another front yard because it's street-fronting on a main street. As stated, it somewhat acts as an alley in a minor street frontage for a lot of these properties. So they're asking just for consistency with what's been developed to have a zero setback from Freeman Street. They're still going to provide right-of-way landscaping, which they're showing there, and that'll still be provided. They will also provide curb, I'm sorry, gutter, which will provide for additional parking. As of right now, I believe it's just a dirt area. So it'll be improved with stormwater and the gutter there, which will also provide more parking.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, though, in your presentation, you explained that the reason for this request was because in order to build the extra units that they're entitled to because of the density bonus. But if we started out with fewer units, then we wouldn't need this variance. Is that correct?
Exactly. They wouldn't be able to build the amount of units that they're proposing, provide the required parking without having this basically, building pushed further or closer to South Freeman Street.
Understood. Okay, thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hayes, did you have any questions?
Not specifically at this point. I'll save them.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then the next item would be a presentation by the applicant. So point of order, you've got 20 minutes, so you can use the entire 20 minutes now or divide it up any way you want, and then you can save time for rebuttal.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Balma, and Commissioners online. This is a new record for me. Dan Nebom from the Lightfoot Planning Group, offices in Carlsbad, representing the applicant, Homework Development. We also have our traffic engineer here tonight to talk about any issues related to traffic later on. But appreciate Scott's presentation on this. There's quite a few items on this project, and primarily, it being a density bonus project, there's some different, you know, standards that get applied here. And that comes from state density bonus law, and also comes from the city's density bonus provisions in the zoning code. Also, the location in the transit priority area within a, you know, less than a half-mile, .4 mile from a transit station also ties into density bonus law, and some other standards are available to this project. Scott, can you put this on? He's going to work on that. But in the meantime, I would like to address the CFD condition that was brought up. You know, we appreciate that. It was kind of a late item for us, and you have the letter from my client's attorney. So we stand in opposition to that condition being placed on the project this time. Wanted to make sure we put that on the record. That's not approved yet. It hasn't gone to council for approval. It's been talked about for a while. I think the Alta project downtown was the first one that had that condition come up on it last year in May of 2020. So we just wanted to get that on the record. I mean, if it does get put on the project, it would be per the way it's written right now. And they're okay with that language. But the opposition is just having the condition applied and would ask that you not apply it to the resolution tonight. So I think Scott has this ready to go now. Okay. You only have the PDF on? Okay. Luckily, I did a PDF, too, because the PowerPoint's a little problem. Some of these slides are going to be very similar to what you saw from Scott, but wanted to just go through some of the information, maybe go in a little bit more detail on it. Again, project location, Long Coast Highway, we were just talking about. It's proximity to the Sprinter Station, you know, and the varied conditions around the site and in the Coast Highway corridor. You know, currently, it's developed the automotive uses as we had shown. You know, we have the residential that's setback from Coast Highway and the Coast Highway corridor with the provisions of the Coast Highway corridor plan and the other commercial and semi-industrial and commercial development along Coast Highway. I want to go through a couple of the components on the project. Oh, I'm going to have to Okay. And speaking of the residential component of the project, as Scott went through, this ties into the density bonus element, and it is a mixed-use project in the C2 zone on Coast Highway. But 11% of the units are going to be reserved. The base units are reserved for very low-income households, and that equates to five units within the project. So we have 49 market-rate units and five reserved for very low income. Under state density bonus law, that's an 11% factor, and that gains a 35% bonus for the project. Scott had mentioned it, but the units will range from 1,000, just over 1,000, to over 1,600 square feet in size with two- and three-bedroom units in various configurations. We do have the courtyards on the second level that are open to the sky. It's a very open-air project on the interior. There's bicycle storage on all levels. There's a bike room on the ground floor. And then there's the amenity that's shown up in the corner of this view, which is the Morrison Coast Highway corner, and that's the fourth-story view deck. That'd be a primary amenity for this project. As we mentioned, there's not roof decks, but there's this fourth-floor view deck that's at that level. No, that just went bad. There we go. The commercial component of the project Are you on PowerPoint? Okay, there we go. Thank you. So the commercial component of the project, I'm showing you the first-level floor plan that's incorporated with the landscape plan and the parking area. But again, there's three different commercial suites, size for neighborhood-serving commercial uses. It's 3,244 square feet of commercial. The suites range in size, again, from just over 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, the largest suite being at the corner. These will be accessed directly off the Coast Highway sidewalk. Each has their own entrance, Coast Highway. There's no parking along this portion of Coast Highway. It's red curb, partly why we're showing a landscape area out there along the parkway. And we'll have the sidewalk will be rebuilt and improved along that section to be ADA compliant. That's one of the requirements for development along here. These commercial spaces are sized to pure commercial. You know, from the frontage, they have prominent glass façades, 11-foot ceiling plate, 12-foot ceiling height inside. And then also, that ties into landscape improvements that are proposed with the project along both street frontages along Freeman and along the south side of the project adjacent to the DAV site. The corner landscaping has been designed to complement the landscaping to the north with the Townhomes project to the north at the corner of Morrison Coast Highway as well. And speaking to access and parking and transit, we've talked about our proximity to transit. There's also the bus lines that exist on Coast Highway or within 100 to 200 feet of bus stops from this project. Scott had gone through the parking requirements, and I'll do it a little bit later on these slides. But again, we have 77 parking spaces within the garage, required to have 75. And that's utilizing the density bonus parking standards that are implemented by the city and by the state. There's 66 residential spaces and 11 commercial spaces. Scott had mentioned there's going to be a provision to allow those 11 spaces to be used on off-hours, as you would in just about any mixed-use project, for this project as well. And that'll be the reciprocal parking agreement. There's also EV charging stations included as required into this project. There'll be 10 for the residential and one for the commercial. And then I mentioned the bike storage room that's on the first floor, and that's a 460-square-foot bike storage room. So that's prominent, plus there's bike storage areas on the upper levels. Again, this is the prominent view. Scott had shown this. We've shown it from Coast Highway and Moore Street. Again, showing you the existing conditions that are there in the lower right-hand corner. This is the secondary view from Freeman and Moore Street, looking southwest of the project. Again, the view of the existing buildings, the automotive uses that are there. And this view helps show some of the corner conditions of this project, some of the sloped and angled roof features and horizontal features, and the colors on the building that we worked with staff through the community comments we had received to upgrade the project, provide some more variation and relief from the mass and recesses in the project. Also shows kind of how it orients along the lower level with the landscaping along Freeman, and then how it ties back into Morse with the planar areas. Again, this is the view from the other corner we were just looking at, along Moore Street, or along Freeman, excuse me, looking to the north. Again, showing the landscape and the parkway, and then it'd be a sidewalk adjacent to the building. And yeah, the waiver, I'll talk about the waivers in a minute, is, you know, that line is established pretty much there, but it's setback off the drivelines, a curb line of the street, 10 feet. So it's still somewhat setback from the street. These are the actual elevations that are part of the project, again, that we'd worked on with staff through the comments received. We lightened the colors. There were some darker browns in the project originally. Those have been removed. Tower elements, this is the west-facing elevation along Coast Highway at the top. Kind of the elevator tower element was worked in. Again, the horizontal banding, some of the different relief in the balcony areas were improved in the project to carry this theme throughout the whole design. The lower level is the Moore Street frontage. And this is the upper view, is the Freeman Street frontage. And then again, the southern frontage that's adjacent to the DAV site. Again, I think these help also show how the landscape buffers tie in along the edges of the project. And then Scott had talked about the waivers. And under density bonus law, you know, you are allowed to be provided with waivers from the jurisdictions that are reviewing your project. There's also incentives under density bonus law you can ask for that can waive certain number of development requirements for a project. This project's not asking for any incentives. It would be allowed to at 11% of very low income. So the two waivers, Scott went through them again, is the 15-foot front yard setback off Freeman. Again, it's consistent with the development pattern along Freeman. And if that waiver wasn't provided, and the waiver for the BMP landscape areas, it would preclude the project from being able to build out as design. That's an important tenant under density bonus law. You can talk about, if you designed it differently from the beginning, then that might be a factor to consider. But when you come in and design it to meet a certain number of units and provide the density bonus units, the waivers are designed to allow for those to be built out. You see them in a number of different aspects related to parking and setbacks and building height. Which, on this project, we're not asking for a waiver of building height. The project meets the height standards. And again, with parking, we also exceed the standards under the city's code and state code for affordable housing project. Again, here's the density bonus parking chart that Scott had mentioned. I won't spend a whole lot of time going through it, but we are doing .5 space per bedroom. And under current Affordable Housing Law, AB 2345, you know, that went into effect in January 1st, you can, with our proximity to transit, you can request .5 spaces per unit, which is very low. And we're doing .5 per bedroom on this. I think that is important to bring up. Again, Scott had mentioned, you know, we qualify for that because we contain the right number of affordable units or within a half-mile of major transit stop, and we have an obstructed access to the transit stop. Those are three requirements to invoke that parking standard that we're using. We mentioned VMT earlier, and the vehicle miles traveled requirements for this project. And the project does screen out of the VMT requirements because we are in the transit priority area, and we have less than 1,000 ADT, consistent with the general plan as well. But I would like to spend a little bit of time going through some points related to our local traffic analysis. Detailed traffic analysis was done for the project. It was done in concert with staff with their requirements and with their input into the traffic analysis. And we used traffic calculations that were taken before March 2020, before the COVID restrictions were put in. And we also have counts after that, but we're not factoring those into the project. We use those counts, plus we used an additional 1.5% year-growth factor. That was worked out with traffic staff, and I think they're on the line tonight if we have some specific questions on that. And again, we have our traffic engineer with us as well. But that 1.5% growth factor was factored in looking ahead, future years with the traffic and with what our effects might be on the surrounding areas. And when that was, again, determined with staff, I mentioned data collected after March 2020 wasn't ultimately used in our impact analysis. And we also took a very conservative approach to this, where the project is equated to 390 trips per day. But we didn't take a trip credit for the existing use that was there. So it's a very conservative approach. If we accounted for the existing trips that occur on that site, we'd only have a difference in an increase of 26 trips per day. But we're using 390. And that leads to some of the findings from the analysis. Again, the study area was identified by staff looking at the streets and segments around the project. That analysis in the LTA meets the Level of Service Evaluation Guidelines, and it was approved by staff. Project traffic doesn't exceed the city thresholds for any impacts require off-site road improvements. And the one requirement that we do have is to add a Class 3 bike route sign along the Moore Street frontage, identify the bike route that's running through there. And again, Scott went through some of the outreach that we did, but I have it kind of line-itemed here a little bit. So on March 16th, we did send out a project information mailer. On April 15th, we did attend the online meeting of the South Oak Community Group and answered a number of questions and took a lot of comments, a lot of questions. I understand there's a lot of comments from folks that we've heard throughout, and that stemmed us working with staff on some of the revisions to the project. We did provide a response to those comments in a letter on May 3rd, and that's included in some of the project materials. And on May 4th, we attended a second meeting with that group with Scott in attendance because they wanted staff to be in attendance at another meeting. And we've, you know, fielded questions throughout this process. And again, you've heard these mentioned, but some of the project revisions that were done in response to the comments were lightening the colors, working on some of the roof areas and the articulation of the building, making enhancements to add articulation to the project entry towers. And then we also worked, Sean had been working with traffic staff on removing the Freeman parking restriction. There's an overnight restriction that you can't park overnight, and that would be an outcome of this project to remove that. And improving the curb gutter and street improvements along that section, removing two of the driveways there on Morse and increasing curb over there, so there's some additional on-street parking there as well. on-street parking there as well. And so that's my presentation. I'm happy to field any questions. I'm sure there's some comments tonight. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Director Hunter, would it be appropriate now just to open this up to the public? Or if the planning commissioners have some questions, should we do it now or just wait for the public review and then do it all at one time?
Mr. Chairman, it's your prerogative. It's not uncommon to see if the planning commissioners have questions of the applicant. Maybe that provides information for the public, but it's up to you.
Okay. So let's open that up to the planning commissioners. Are there any questions to the applicant?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Thank you. To the applicant, what was the rationale for having so much commercial space, given that there's such a surplus of empty commercial space around town?
Yeah, I'll answer that. So I think the reasoning there is that those are, you know, reasonable-sized spaces that they do lease out, understanding there's a challenge, as we know with any mixed-use project we're working on, what's the appropriate amount? You talked about this at your last meeting, you know, varies. Consider, you know, the Coast Highway element, the traffic counts and the exposure on Coast Highway, these might be reasonable spaces at that size, you know? Until they do lease out, they can be used to support the project as we're looking at with some of the downtown area mixed-use projects as well. There's not a magic bullet to the square footage, as we know, but these sized spaces could host some reasonable, you know, neighborhood-serving uses.
So over time, these residential units will be sold as condominiums, right?
Correct. That's the...
Okay. So who would be then left in charge of the commercial, of managing the commercial tenants?
Well, the management for the project and the HOA for the project would be in charge of that, is that correct, Sean?
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yeah, I just had one question, and it really just, I think a lot of the comments that we were reading had a lot to do with the concerns on parking, and I appreciate you talking a little bit more about Freeman Street because I was going to ask that question. So I'm glad to hear that that's part of the resolution specifically to the project. You are within a half-mile of a Sprinter station. We know that the headways aren't great on that, and how many people will give up a car to go there, and all these units are at least two bedrooms? So I know per the state's code, you could have gone up as high as 1 and 1/2 parking spaces per unit based on your sizes, two and three-bedroom. So I'm just curious as to why you opted to go with, even though I know you're permitted to, but why you opted to go with a lower amount? Was it just development site restrictions and you put as many in there as you could or cost or just curious?
Commissioner Hayes, let me see if I understand your question. You're asking why we didn't go with the lower parking ratio that could be allowed by the state?
No, the max. I mean, you already are within, like you said, you could have gone lower.
Right.
You could have gone...
I think it's a combination, yeah, of what you mentioned. It's to have a reasonable amount for the units and to provide support for the project and within the space that's available, you know, to provide a single-level parking deck on the ground floor. That's the amount of space that can fit in there, so.
So that was the, it was a single-level deck that really restricted you. You had to go down another level to get more parking spaces.
Yeah, I mean, the feasibility of an entire another deck is very challenging for a project this size.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Obama?
On that same, kind of on the same path, who are you like marketing to? Like, what's your typical buyer, do you feel, for this project?
Yeah, I think it's young families. I don't know if Sean wants to jump in on that, but it's Hallmark's marketing plan for the project. You could see singles and small families, of course. Some of these units might support, you know, larger households than that, but, you know, the price point, I think you told me was if you want to go into that or not, Sean?
Yeah, hi. Sean Santa Cruz with Hallmark Development Corp. From our experience lately in Cleveland Street, we've done about six projects over the last seven years on Cleveland Street, finishing off selling right now. To honestly, to be honest with you, the mix is all over the place. We've had empty nesters, we've had young families, we've had, you know, families with two kids, one kids, you know, no kids. What the biggest driver is for a lot of the new projects is elevator access. So right now, we have two projects under construction at 1021 and 1105 South Cleveland Street, and that was the first project we decided to put an elevator in on a podium style because the number-one complaint we had was not having elevator access. So when we're targeting a specific buyer class, it's basically any one of those groups that is willing to live that close to the coast, have an affordable product. We're looking at about $500,000 to $700,000 right now currently for the price point, but again, what that looks like when it actually gets built out. So it's kind of hard to target that market, but we're trying to achieve the vision of the city and reduce parking, you know, push transit and really focus on those kind of goals that are there for VMT, other requirements as well. And again, I think as Dan mentioned, the current zoning requires only one spot per unit, so we're already exceeding it under that, and with the half-bedroom count, it exceeds that even further. So just wanted to clarify that, under the commercial zoning parking.
Are your other projects, do they also provide that same parking ratio?
No, on that one, that's an R3 development, so the requirement is two spaces per unit. So it's a different zoning entirely type project. It's only three-story limitations there on Cleveland Street, so the development standards are completely different, and it's also not a density bonus program on that project.
Like, when you say, you know, young families or even empty nesters, usually they have two cars. I mean, even, you know, the wife and the husband usually have to work because it's the way it is kind of these days. And so like in that case, they're going to need two cars, and it's a two-bedroom, you know, place that they can probably afford at the $500,000 level. It's a nice product, just that parking might be hard for their family.
Yeah, it's hard to predict how many cars, and we understand that as being a concern that they may have more cars with more generations living in there. I think with the hope with COVID and working from home, providing extra office spaces, little niches in there for people to do that, even the commercial space down below, maybe a future little work center for people that could be leased out that there, which they wouldn't have to leave their home. So we're kind of adapting with the times right now to try to see what is going to happen, but we obviously understand there's a lot of pushback to believe that people are actually going to take mass transit. But again, the goal is to provide density near these transit centers, and within half-mile walkability is pretty much the goal that's been handed down from the state and what's been pushed by the city in terms of what they'd like to see in terms of development versus suburban sprawl, you know, focusing on redevelopment and fill sites. And obviously, with these challenges, it's just the physical limitations of the site itself and the size. No one's buying blocks of South Coast Highway, unfortunately, to redevelop and provide significant amount of underground parking or parking structures within that frame.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions from the planning commission, we'll open it up to the public. Thank you, sir. Scott, do you want to call the list?
Yeah.
So we have three speakers on Zoom. First speaker will be Sheri Mackin, followed by Colleen Balch, and I believe the third speaker will be Joel West. So Sheri, please unmute your mic. You're free to speak.
Thank you. I'm concerned. The project before you will set precedent for the development of Coast Highway, and if approved as presented tonight, a horrible precedent will have been set. The project needs to go back to the drawing board and follow the current approved local coastal plan, L land use plan. The proposed project must comply with our local coastal plan, land use plan, and it doesn't. Additionally, there should be zero mention of its compatibility with the Coast Highway Vision Plan. That is not an approved plan with the Coastal Commission nor incorporated into our current local coastal plan. Coastal Act policy states, "The Coastal Act requires visual qualities of the coastal zone to be protected and new development be cited and designed to be visually compatible with the character and the surrounding areas." I point to Section 6 of our LUP where the LUP requires that all new development is compatible and high-scale color and form with the surrounding neighborhood. Additionally, our LUP requires the city promote efforts to achieve high-quality design for buildings to be constructed at prominent locations. The proposed project is not beach-themed. One merely needs to look at the hotels to understand what a beach theme is. Hopefully, you have time to read my email pointing to Section 6, wherein South Oak was described in detail by the author. I won't go through it here. I'm assuming that you have been able to read that information, but I am going to end with this. "Single-family residential portion of South Oceanside is characterized by tree-lined streets, well-maintained, modest residence. The high level of maintenance and sense of community pride has helped to preserve and enhance visual quality in this area. This development is grossly out of scale with the neighborhood and will dwarf homes to the east while cutting off fresh ocean breezes and neighbors' privacy." Additionally, Section 7 Site Development Building Design Standards A2 states, "Varying building setbacks create special variety. Designing a large building with varying setbacks adds interest and creates small intimate places." This project does not have these qualities. The developer has requested zero setbacks and crowding into on to Freeman Street and the Coast Highway instead. Additionally, citing Section 6, Policy 9 states, "In areas where a change to more intensive use is proposed, adequate buffers or transition zones such as increased setbacks, landscape barriers, decorative walls shall be provided." Notice it states "shall" not "should." Further, the LUP states, "The two-block area joining Hill Street is designated as transitional dense R3 and R2 between the commercial strip and single-family neighborhood." Our LUP requires that development recognize natural boundaries of neighborhoods and promote actions and transitions. Provide buffering for residential neighborhoods from heavy traffic or other undesirable intrusions when they cannot be avoided otherwise. We've asked the developer to provide landscape median, a transition into the neighborhood of Morrison Alvarado to indicate transition to a residential neighborhood and to calm increased traffic. That has not been addressed in the staff report. And a final note, please. This developer says that he met with the community. Yes, he did, but he did not answer the questions that the community asked. Thank you so much. Please don't approve this project.
Thank you, Sheri.
Okay. Next speaker is Colleen Balch, followed by Joel West. Colleen, please unmute your mic. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner and, or excuse me, Chairperson and Commissioners. I, first off, I want to say I agree 100% with what Sheri already told you. The developer also met with all of us, but he also never, ever changed anything. A couple of little changes to a rooftop doesn't change a box sitting on a lot. So Freeman Street, I'm going to start there. You can't have it both ways. Staff can't say you're going to use it as an alley, and then in the next sentence say you're going to use it as a street as their main entrance to their facility. It's one or the other. It's a public street with a street sign, and if you're going to improve it, you improve both sides, curb and gutter, for the entire length of the project, not half the street. It's ridiculous to do that. Why would you do that to a neighborhood? Step it up. Next one is, there's a mention of developer incentives. They are not approved anywhere on Coast Highway currently, so using developer incentives means nothing. Page 2 of Hallmark's overview states, "Using the Vision Plan Avenue Specs is a standard for developing." Per Page 29 of the Vision Plan, "Avenues are to be less urban and of lower intensity density. These sections are envisioned to be greener and more expansive than compact tightly-framed design of node areas." So even though it's not approved and you can't use it, you still violated it. The BMT planners that appear, they all appear to approach on the sidewalk wits. We've got nice wide sidewalks now, so why aren't we keeping them? Why aren't the utility boxes also being relocated or put underground? Now is the opportunity for that. Why do you just do the easy part? And you ask for the incentives and you ask for the density bonus, but this is like trying to put a size 10-foot in a size 6 shoe. So I'm sorry, but I want you to vote no on this project or at least send them back for redesign. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last Zoom speaker will be Joel West. You're free to speak, Joel.
Thank you. Members of the planning commission, I'm Joel West, and like the two previous speakers, I'm asking that this be sent back for further review. The staff report says that the project is compatible with surrounding developments in terms of land use density and lot size and consistent with many of the existing and proposed mixed-use developments on South Coast Highway. And first off, compatibility of a proposed development cannot be used to justify increased density or scale. Otherwise, developers would flood the city with non-compliant projects to force a change to the city's standards. Instead, approval of this project will change the standards for the community and will be cited as a precedent to justify later massive projects. Next, as mentioned both in the testimony and the public comments, there's been a lot of mention made of the Coast Highway Plan. In June 2019, this commission endorsed and the council enacted in August 2019, a Coast Highway Plan, not yet approved by Coastal, that excludes any accelerated development south of Morse. So the standards south of Morse are different than the standards north of Morse, and thus what's going on north of Morse on Coast Highway cannot be used as a precedent for what's happening here. Third, as you know from the area, the four-story residential building is not consistent or compatible with the broader South Oak community, which, as you know, is a single and two-story residential with a few churches, a school, and some businesses. And finally, you know, on Coast Highway between Morse and the city limits, there's only one project taller than two stories, the old Blade Building. There are no buildings on Coast Highway south of Oceanside Boulevard that are four stories or 42 feet, so this is not consistent with anything yet on Coast Highway. The project is said to be similar in density and scale to the townhomes across the street, but this project's 42 feet tall versus 34 and 1/2 for the townhomes. It's 59 units per acre versus 16.5 units per acre, and the lot coverage is 86% versus 33% for the townhomes. So in all ways, it's much denser and more massive than what was built across the street that's being cited as a precedent. Finally, to increase the supply of affordable housing for the city by five units, the developer is being allowed to reduce parking and increase by a total of 14 units. The city today has a policy to de-restrict ADUs to prevent their use of the project for short-term rentals because a short-term rental takes away affordable housing from the community. To be consistent with this policy, the developer should be required to de-restrict these additional 14 units. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all our Zoom speakers. We have 12 in-person speakers. I will read their names and give each the person on deck. If they could just come up and sit behind the podium here, that'd be great. So first speaker will be, I apologize if I butcher your name here, it's Ketsia Shab. This one here is fine.
Could you state your name for the record, please? My name's Ketsia Shab. And I have a property on South Ditmar Street, 1600 block. And this scale and the height of this building does not belong to the South Oceanside community. It will have a detrimental effect to the surrounding neighborhood and the houses there. South Oceanside is a very special community. It's single-family homes, mostly one stories, some second stories. A lot of these homes are generational and, which is very hard to find nowadays in a lot of communities. All the places I've lived to, I have not seen so many people have generational homes where they're telling you it was their grandparents' house and they want to live the rest of their life in their home. But we really have to take, I really hope the planning commission will take into consideration the people that have lived here and have had homes here for 30, 40, or more years. And they're the ones you should be looking at, not the developers who come in, have a project, do their project, and... at, not the developers who come in, have a project, do their project, and move on. Because then, the people who live here who have the repercussions. This project has not enough parking. The parking issues already are burdened by all the cars and the multi, some of these now we have a lot of short-term rentals. And they are also not wanting to de-in, ban the short-term rentals in the apartment buildings. So that can also create problems later down the road. There is no four-story building on South Coast Highway from Mission on down. Not one, not on the South Coast Highway. And certainly not down in the South Coastside community. They say that this will be, there's a good transition, but it is not. So in a lot of their statements, they are misleading and inaccurate. As far as traffic, there are, it will increase the amount of traffic on these side streets. South Coastside has three access streets to the I-5. That will also become a problem. And as it is on Whaley, on Moore Street, people, residents are complaining because cars just come down fast. So that will be, that's also an issue. People on Whaley would like to have some speed bumps. Same on Moore Street. And when they say that there's going to be public transport, well, that's really unrealistic as well. Because most people here will have two or three cars in these apartments. And maybe they'll go to work, but they're not going to go see their grandmother in Pasadena or in Chino Hills or down into Mecula on public transport. So there's a lot of issues that we have to deal with here. But mostly, this is going to affect the quality of life, the integrity of the neighborhood, and impact it in a very negative way. And I thank you for your time, and I hope you will not allow this project to go through as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person speaker will be Christine Anne Russell, followed by Arlene Hammersmith. Okay, oh, I have another. The next speaker after Christine will be Jane McVeigh. So Christine, feel free to come to the podium.
Who's the next speaker, Scott? Christine's coming up?
Christine's our next speaker.
Okay, she's coming up, and I think we got somebody on deck. Let's try to have somebody on deck so we can keep this moving.
Yes, yeah. And then the next speaker on deck will be Jane McVeigh.
Thank you.
Christine, you're free to come up to the podium.
I apologize for my slowness. I'm a stage four cancer patient.
You're fine.
On three different active chemotherapy drugs.
Well, the best to you.
So again, I'm sorry. Hi, good evening. I am trying to catch up. My community informed me of this current development. I was out of pocket, so I'm sorry. This is the first time you're hearing from me. I'm a former safety and environmental engineer, and you can't ignore the public health and safety and wire for fathers, passed laws in the 50s and 60s to stop the problems that now exist. I definitely believe that this cluster bomb would have never have been considered, given the current South Coastside city status. I know it's because of a lot of people breaking laws due to evil and greed the last 40 years. I am a stage four cancer patient because of being around development and construction during my years of service. There's two websites, www.cdpha.ca.gov, California Department Public Health and Safety website, trumps any kind of waivers and codes or any of that nonsense that's been going on in the state of California. That website does highlight www.multiplechemicalsensitivityfoundation.org. That is within that website, talks about what chronic chemical sensitivity is. I suffer from that. I am on permanent disability. I disagree with the affordable housing scam. That's a bunch of nonsense. Given my conditions and my illnesses, there's no way I could ever live in a complex like that because buildings share walls and poison goes through the walls. People use pesticides, insecticides. Once you have a big building like that constructed, and it's like a ticking time bomb, and people are exposing themselves to harm, and they don't realize this. They think they're living in a safe, beautiful neighborhood while they don't realize that chemicals that their neighbor is using actually goes through the walls. And that's why fires spread so fast. I left the city of, I left San Diego because of all the cluster bombs, and I moved to South Coastside because of the current status. And I'm talking tonight because I'm also in threat. There's a current notice of application and proposal, and I'm going to fight that, and I have a petition going. I'm sorry I can't get the petition going for this current situation, but I was fighting cancer, and I still am fighting cancer. And I am just completely disgusted by what has happened to Oceanside the last 10 years as a military officer. You know, our coastline is still supposed to look like what Camp Pendleton looks like. And it is hell. That stoplight at that intersection is hell every day. So just multiply that by 200-plus cars, it's going to be a goddamn nightmare. And I'm sorry, but you're going to have serious accidents. You're going to have people, and you're going to have deaths. So I am totally against this, and you need to revisit and vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jane McVeigh, followed by Noam Newman.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Jane McVeigh, and I live at 1604 South Ditmar Street. I'm on the southeast corner of Ditmar and Morris. My house faces Morris. This project will exacerbate traffic, parking, and noise issues already in South Coastside, which will impact the quality of life of the entire neighborhood. I have three issues I want to talk about: traffic, parking, and quality of life. First is traffic. There's a stop sign on Cassidy, and the speed bumps on California are taller than the speed bumps on Morris. So there already is a tremendous amount of cut-through traffic on Morris. Based on the existing traffic report, 30% of the traffic generated by this project is going to go down eastbound on Morris, making this situation much worse. Now, with two lanes of traffic from Oceanside Boulevard to Morris, the stacking through the intersection on Coast Highway already exists, and it creates a backup stacking that is westbound on Morris. With 60% of the traffic projected to be going westbound to Coast Highway, there are going to be backups on Morris, and the result of this is that they're going to wind their way through all of the streets in the neighborhood to get out to the freeway or to Cassidy or wherever they're otherwise going. This is going to add, at least based upon the original traffic report, 234 more cars a day seeking their way out of this single-family neighborhood. The traffic speed is also 25 miles an hour, and as my house is a street-side view of the speed on the traffic, I can attest that it would be very helpful to the neighborhood to have more traffic mitigation and enforcement. So I would request the developer build a small landscape median, perhaps not at Alvarado, but where appropriate, to slow down the traffic and to indicate to the traffic, particularly the large trucks that are now accessing our neighborhood, that they are entering a residential area. Second is parking. These units are likely to be bought by investors who will use them as short-term rentals. It was stated at one of the meetings that the CCNRs do not prohibit it, but in the future it could be changed. And that will further impact traffic and parking. Also, if there's no deed restriction against the commercial parking space being used by a bar or a restaurant, it's moot because those spaces are not going to be available in the evening if there's a bar or restaurant. So I would request that you also ask the developer to de-restrict it against any eating or drinking establishments, as well as provide additional parking. And third is quality of life. South Oak is a unique area that's already heavily impacted by short-term rentals, ADUs, and inadequate traffic planning, mitigation, and enforcement. With the advent of the Incentive District, the newly proposed housing plan, the new state ordinance that allows fourplexes on single-family lots, South Oak is one of the very few neighborhoods in the city that has, that's going to have multiple laws and ordinances affecting the quality of life. There are many people who are very angry about this project, but they're young families who work and they have children, they're unable to attend this, and the neighborhood counts on the Planning Commission to please do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Noam Newman, followed by Emmett.
Good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners and staff. I'd like to speak in favor of the project, particularly I'd like to speak to the mixed-use aspect of the project. There's a certain harmony associated with the residential aspect and the commercial space. And I believe that over the medium and long term, after stabilization, it can create long-term economic opportunities to preserve and create new local jobs. One of the items that the developer spoke of is creating perhaps workspaces within the commercial office space. So I think if you create a situation where both of these two uses are speaking to each other efficiently, it can have a positive long-term impact on the community. So I just wanted to say that.
Sir, could you state your name and your address?
I apologize. My name is Noam Newman, and I'm just speaking in favor of the project.
Your address?
637 Camino de los Maras.
City?
In the city of San Clemente.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Emmett, next speaker, followed by Margie Walters.
Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission members, my name is Emmett Albrigati, and I live across the street in the Vista del Mar project on Morris. And our development has 32 units, and many, many families in there have children who drive, who go to high school or college, or they're empty nesters with their parents. And people have, we have two car garages for every unit, but there are four and five cars and drivers for almost half the units in our development. It's a nightmare trying to get parking, and all the parking on Morris is taken up by people from our development as overflow. So I would like to say that if we could go back to the coastal code, where I think 119 parking spaces, as I calculated, would be required for this proposed development, as opposed to the 77, that means there are 42 cars short from what the coastal code would be. And I love density. I think this is a great project. I think, you know, there's safety in numbers. The use there is not that great. I think our neighborhood is going to benefit from this, but it's got to be development done right, and it's got to be parked adequately. The reality is, people drive, they don't, I don't think anyone from our development has ever walked to the Sprinter stop. I mean, it's just, it doesn't happen. But at the intersection where we're talking about this project, you've got the curb cut for Freeman, our development, Primos, you've got Alvarado twice. So you've got like a number of curb cuts right there. It's really a dangerous traffic situation. Any kind of traffic calming and islands and maybe even a signal, I mean, we need to do some things to make it safer too. Maybe one other thing we could do is have permit parking. The houses in our neighborhood are going to be inundated with parking from this project. It's way, way underparked. And I really feel sorry for these people who own million-dollar houses who are going to have cars parked in front all the time. Maybe the solution is to have permit parking so the only people who can park on Alvarado or Morris or whatever in front of the single-family houses have to have a permit. So the people who live there can park there, but the people in this proposed development can't inundate our neighborhood. So that's basically all I have to say. I hope you will reconsider some aspects of this development, and I really appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Margie Walters, followed by Nancy Esperance.
I'm Margie Walters. I live at 1807 South Nevada Street. I'm opposed to this project. I just feel it's way too big for our neighborhood. Not only the parking, but it's just too big for our little South Oak community. And that's all I really have to say. I'm just in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nancy, followed by Richard Fox.
My name is Nancy Lesperance. I live at 1611 Alvarado Street, directly behind this proposed development. And I have multiple concerns. I did attend both of the South Coastside community meetings, and we talked about our concerns. And there were a few changes made from our concerns, but because of the high-density bonus and other incentives, it feels like there is absolutely no budge as to the number of units that they want to put there. And then you talk about not having parking on Coast Highway and Freeman Street. The only parking would be Morris, and Morris has already taken up with parking. I also agree with other speakers that were on Zoom. There's, I'm also concerned about the height of it. People are going to be looking directly down in my backyard, and it's going to cut off ocean breeze that I get in my house. It's really, it's just too big for our neighborhood. And I hope that you will vote no to it tonight and have it be revisited. And I'm not opposed to developing there. I'd like to see something new there, but just not this big. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Richard Fox, followed by Carley.
Greetings, Commissioner. My name is Richard Fox. I'm a lifetime resident of South Coastside. I live on Serrano and Cassidy. I also run the South Coastside Community and Merchants' Association for over 30 years. So I know what people in South Coastside want and don't want, and this project, as it is, we don't want. The staff report on this project states, "Land use compatibility to minimize conflicts with adjacent or related uses. The uses of land shall not create negative visual impacts to surrounding land uses." This project does not fit in South Coastside. The Coast Highway Vision was an advisory document, and when the council voted to implement that project, it voted four to one to exclude areas south of Moore Street from development incentives. This project is south of Moore Street. Besides the dramatic lack of parking, the boxy design, the small setbacks, the four stories is way over the top. The Moore Street townhomes across the street, which we talked about earlier, have 83 spaces for 38 units. This only has 77 spaces for 54 units. It's definitely going to way impact the parking and the, in South Coastside. And I drove from Monterey back to Oceanside a couple of months ago. Along the actual Coast Highway, there are no four-story buildings. Why do we have to set a precedence? Three stories is plenty. You know, we held that, some South Coastside community meetings that were mentioned before with the developer, addressed our concerns, and the only ones that were addressed was like the color of the building. So why do we have to have these public meetings? Why do we even have these public meetings if the city and staff just cave what the developer wishes? Oceanside's a jewel, and we need to be, it needs to be treasured. So we don't need to settle for just any builder to come in and do what he wants. So this is not what South Coastside wants. I'm asking to revisit this, pull it back, revisit it, and let's start again. And I'm also asking to deny the waivers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Carley, followed by Susan Edward.
My name is Carrie Lasco. I live at 1001 California Street, and I am urging safety, safety, safety. We live in a community with an elementary school, and I think that has to be a very important factor in the developments that you want to choose to decide to put in that community. You haven't even complied with us to put You haven't even complied with us to put crossing safety lights across Coast Highway at Kelly, Whaley, and the coastal beach access. We've been asking this for, I would say, close to 10 years, and we've been asking to open up the dip, and you haven't complied with that either. And we've been told that that's been approved to open up. And now you want to force us with these three-to-four-story developments, and you're not even thinking about the safety because we have such, so many young families moving in, supporting South Oceanside Elementary School. I am still a volunteer at that school, and I am very emphatic about the safety of the kids getting to and from school. I'm glad we're not getting those roundabouts because I'm wondering how those kids are going to go through there. So now you want to put these big projects in there with no consideration for the safety of the families that are supporting that community for this city. That is my only most important issue. I think the city, the council, the Planning Commission needs to really reconsider what they want to develop in there. I have been praising this for 20 years coming to these meetings. We are a half-mile, half-mile from I-5. I have lived in Santa Monica Beach, Huntington Beach, down to Laguna Beach, and I chose Oceanside because it was safe. I get high-density living, but you can't do this to South Oceanside. You could do this in the downtown area because it's more commercial, but you can't do this in South Oceanside. You really seriously need to think about what your plans are for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Edward, followed by Ken Layton.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Edwards. I live at 1608 Alvarado Street. I've been looking at my house on the pictures here tonight. Nancy lives just across the street from me. My house faces to the west, so I am on Alvarado, and I am literally just one house in from Primos. I walk that area every day. I walk, I generally walk six miles every day, then I'm home, so I'm very familiar with all the neighborhoods around here. I want to say I've been to a bunch of the meetings with this developer that we had previously. I don't see that, I mean, other than paint, okay, and chopped off a corner of this massive structure, other than that, there has not been any meaningful changes to this development. That coastal planning is for south, is not meant for being south of Morse. I am it, south of Morse. I expect the laws to be applied equally. Four stories is too high. I mean, come on, four stories is too high, and the parking isn't enough. I already have people that park every single solitary day and night in front of my house from the condos that were built on the corner. We were, I asked for permitting parking, permit parking when that first came up so that we could, I mean, if I have a guest, they can't park on the street in front of my house because somebody's already parking there. I, this mischaracterization of Freeman, I'm sorry, Scott, it's not an alley. It's a street. It has a street sign. It should have curb and gutter work. It should have been done prior to this. It's a mistake that it hasn't been done because people like to call it an alley. It's not an alley. It's a street. The idea of having a mixed-use facility, I don't really have a problem with mixed-use, nor am I opposed to having that whole area developed. I happen to personally love LSI. I love Dwight. He's a hell of a mechanic. I mean, awesome. But I get that the city is headed in a different direction, and I don't have a problem with mixed-use space or having something developed on that corner. I do have a problem with precedent, as many speakers have said here, of having a precedent of a four-story, you know, complex crammed into this thing when we don't have anything like that, and we are not supposed to have anything like that south of Morse. We have enough with the condos as is now. We are, we don't even have a crosswalk that goes from Alvarado over to Primos. That's a heavily trafficked area. You know, it's a huge safety concern. I don't think it's too much to ask to have some sort of traffic calming put in there. I personally would have no problem having it stuck right in the middle of Morse, right where Alvarado comes, because I'm having six- and eight-axle trucks driving down Alvarado on a regular basis. I mean, that's not safe, and no, they're not supposed to be there. So, but they do, right? That's how that works. So I would really appreciate this being revisited. There are a lot of developers out there. Let's have the first precedent that's set for a mixed-use density space done right. Let's not be Newport Beach.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Ken Layton.
Ken Layton, speaking only for myself, a South Oceanside resident since 19, starting in 1963. First of all, this is an extremely important decision. I would like to know why only four of you people, of you Planning Commissioners, are even participating. That means three people can vote yes on this. Planning, land use is the most important thing that a city can do, and you guys aren't even showing up. What's going on with that? Anyway, so when we had North River Farms, the staff and the Planning Commission many times said, "No, thank you. We don't want it." Now, the city council, who were, for whatever reason, voted for it, it was turned down two to one by the people. But the point is, is why is the staff now in the pocket of this hideous ghettoization of South Oceanside? I don't understand it. And Commissioner Bauma, I hope, just as you voted against North River Farms, you will also appreciate that this is going to ghettoize South Oceanside, and I trust that you will do the right thing again this time. Very interesting to hear. I didn't know this, just found it out. South Freeman is an alley. Yeah, South Freeman is an alley. Boy, I guess, I think what this is, is this is a way, well, doggone it, SouthO is already a ghetto, let's make it more ghetto. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think that's correct, and I really disagree with that characterization, that that street, just one block east of South Coast Highway, is an alley? Really? Okay, so then, so then we're hearing that, oh, this is such a good thing. We've got fake stone veneer. We don't have rooftop decks, and we're going to put in trees to soften the bulk and mass. Yippee! Basically, this is a tenement chicken coop. And what you're doing is you're only giving roughly one parking space per unit? Already, South Oceanside is overwhelmed. There is not enough parking. I mean, it's, the businesses are now thriving now, have they been for the last 10 years, which is great, but there simply is not enough parking. This is an inappropriate ghettoization of South Oceanside development, and please do not approve it. And all I can say is, no ghetto for SouthO. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes all the public speakers. We could take that over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So Scott, that concludes our comments from the public?
Yes.
So we take it back to the Planning Commission, then? Okay.
I guess I'll start with something. Couple of the speakers brought up, which was very interesting, and it does resonate with me, especially within our neighborhood and all the fighting we've been doing for North River Farms as it was brought up, was the Coast Highway Vision Plan. Even though it's not vetted yet through the Coastal Commission, it does have a lot going on there that took a long time for a lot of people to put a lot of input. And I think I might have even been one of those back like 15 years ago. So it's been going around for a long time. I understand that it's not yet approved through the Coastal Commission, and that's probably why the developer didn't even choose to address it possibly, but it does have some pretty strong messages. And that one message that I heard pretty strong today was that you can't follow what's going on with what happened with our apartments across the street, I guess on the north side, that was okay, but you can't carry that through on the south side, and that's what that plan says. And so to me, a plan like that had so much public input, I have a feeling that I just feel like, I feel for that. And another question I was going to ask staff is that the only reason this project is even coming before us then with this reduced parking and bonus is because they're going to put in, what, is it five?
Five.
Low-income units, and that's it, right? If they didn't put the five units, it would then be built pretty much like the place across the street then with two parking places per condo? Would that be what we might have seen if they wouldn't have gotten a bonus to add the low-income units? I guess that's my question.
Let me start with the Coast Highway. Okay.
Chairman Commissioners, regarding the Coast Highway Plan, also has a zoning district, which coincidentally is called an incentive district. So there's a little confusion regarding that. The Coast Highway Plan, adopted by council, stopped at Morse Street. So this project is not subject to the Coast Highway Plan. The Coast Highway Plan and its incentive district has not been certified by the Coastal Commission at this point. So this project stands on its own with the existing zoning and the state density bonus law. So that's what it was reviewed under.
When you say it, it doesn't start at Morse Street, then? So you're saying that even though we heard from very many of the people that it does actually affect that area, it doesn't really then? It starts, where does it start, then? Where does the South, where does the Coast Highway Vision Plan for South Oceanside actually start?
As adopted by council, the south boundary of the Coast Highway Vision Plan or the incentive district, which implements the Coast Highway Plan, the south boundary ends at Morse Street. So this project is south of that boundary, and it's not subject to that.
Oh, doesn't make sense. It starts at Morse Street? I don't understand that, Jeff. I mean, so Morse Street is, let me look at the plan here.
Morse Street is north.
The center line of Morse Street is just actually, it starts at Morse Street, but it doesn't really affect this project. It doesn't make sense. I'm sorry.
It goes north from Morse Street.
North. Oh, so that there's no South Coast Vision Plan.
This project is south of Morse Street.
There is no South Coast Highway Vision Plan on the south part of Morse.
Correct.
Oh. So there is no South Coast, and so none of that stuff that we heard tonight was even true?
During the Coast Highway public proceedings, the citizens of SouthO made it very clear they did not want the Coast Highway Vision Plan and the incentive district to apply to SouthO, and staff suggested that we review a sequel alternative that stopped that plan at Morse Street, and that's what council adopted.
Interesting.
So I have to follow up on Louise's question, though. The density has nothing to do with going four floors versus three floors, the five affordable housing units. That's got nothing to do with going to an additional floor?
The existing zoning in, on the Coast Highway, including SouthO, provides up to 45 feet if you're in a C-2 district.
Okay. I'm sorry, what is the height on this?
Forty-two.
It's under, it's under that, is my question.
About 42 feet.
Okay, thank you.
So they're under.
All right.
And then the density is based on the state density bonus law, that if you provide a certain number of affordable housing units, then you're awarded a density bonus. And you can also utilize a parking reduction as well. And we had a similar project, well, not a similar project, but we had a project that utilized a state density bonus, and it got appealed to the city council. And the advice to the city council was that it's very difficult to deny a waiver that is requested per the state density bonus. So the two waivers that they're asking for, setback, and...
Both setback.
Both setbacks, sorry. Can only be denied if they, if there's an objective safety standard that is found to be in violation of this, a written, adopted, objective safety standard. So it's very difficult to deny the waivers. It's very difficult to deny a state density bonus project.
Commissioner, good kind. Do you have any comment?
I have several comments. It may be difficult to deny, but I don't like it. I think this project, I'm not opposed to having a housing project at this corner, but I think this one is too tall, too dense, and too massive. I really oppose that setback variance on Freeman Street, which is a street, not an alley. And I don't understand if the rationale for this project is that we need more housing, why we can't de-restrict against STVRs, short-term vacation rentals. That seems like a no-brainer to me if the rationale is that we need housing. But I, I just think this is too massive, and I really dislike the setback variance on Freeman Street. And I also think it's too tall. I understand it complies with the zoning, but I don't like it. Those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
I am typically one that, if a developer has followed all of the rules that we've set forward, then initially, looking at this until I started seeing all the correspondence, and especially hearing it tonight, there was only one person that came out in support of this project, and they don't live in the neighborhood. Every single other person that came before this commission tonight was opposed, and some of them, especially one of them that comes from living in the new units that was, that, across the street on Morse, admits that those units, especially with the number of bedrooms in each unit, are going to need more than one place to park. We know that there are some limits. There is a maximum number of parking spaces that they could provide per the housing density rules, but they could provide up to 92 spaces to help alleviate that. And I think the city could also do something on the preferential permit parking issue. I don't know if any of you remember, but when the church off of Al Camino, Real, was coming in, that was one of my concerns for the 55-plus neighborhood up there, is that they're going to be inundated with on-street parking because the church was going to provide less. I think that that is an absolutely legitimate request. The neighborhood there is already being affected by parking. The height, that was the one question I was going to ask, so Jeff, thank you for clarifying that with the commercial district. I was wondering why it was so high, considering there isn't any development in that area. So I don't know if there's, if staff has considered looking at amending the zoning or looking at the zoning on that street just to perhaps reduce the height limits to be something more compatible with what's in that area, but I thought that was certainly a concern. And then I did one last thing, appreciate the issue with the pedestrian crossing because I happen to drive that corridor a lot. I like, there's a little pullover studio down the street, so I tend to take that way on my way home, and I see people running across the street quite frequently there without a safe place to cross. So I think that that's something, especially as you add more units on the east side of the street with the access to the coast on the west, we need to do something about improving the access for crossing there as well. So I don't know if I have any other questions that haven't been asked, but the one other thing I was concerned about were the large trucks going down Morse because they should not be there. So...
Can you repeat that, please? That last part?
The heavy trucks.
Okay.
Trucks should not be on a local street like Morse. They're probably trying to avoid Cassidy or, I'm not sure why they're going there, but I would like the city to look into that and try to figure out why there are trucks using Morse if they are.
Thank you. So Scott, do we have anybody from traffic here from...
We do. I believe Tila caught her, and maybe even the traffic director, maybe you on the line? Emmett, are you on the line? If not, we have Tila here. I've asked her to unmute her mic. Tila, can you unmute your mic and speak?
Yes, I'm here.
You're running this?
This is Tila with Traffic Engineering.
Yeah, hi, Tia. So what we heard tonight is safety, I heard, a couple of times, trucks running through Morse, and then... Morris, and then parking, can, in that, do we have enough parking for this development? Can you address those three things from your perspective?
The parking, yeah, the parking would be addressed more by planning. And as for trucks, we have received complaints about trucks utilizing Morris, and we have reached out to OPD, the Oceanside Police Department, about that. And that is something that, from what I understanding, they are, they are slowly addressing. I don't know, it's probably not as visible as residents would like to see due to, you know, the resources over at OPD, but it is something that we're aware of and that is, you know, being looked into. And there are, is OPD officers that are specifically looking out for this type of a thing and are fully aware of the truck traffic in South Oceanside.
Okay.
I can address the parking questions. The coastal zoning ordinance, which this project would typically be required to adhere to, requires one space per unit. So with that, they would need at least 54 spaces in addition to the required commercials So they are providing more than that with the parking that they're providing at .5 spaces per bedroom. So they're, they're meeting the parking requirements.
Mr. Chair?
What's the, where's the .5? How come like on Cleveland, they're building with two parking places per unit, just as like across the street, they built two parking places per unit, but now you're saying it's changed and now it's only .5? Is that just because those other ones were like, they got under the radar, or is that?
The reason for the .5 parking requirement, that's the density bonus parking ratio requirement. Typically, a density bonus project would be closer to transit, public, you know, closer to bus or rail line, things like that. So that's the reason for the reduced parking per, and that's per bed, that's per unit. They're providing that per bedroom. So they're providing more parking than what's required.
So that .5 is all based on their location to the transit, not because of the low-income units that they're providing?
Chair and Commissioners, it's both.
Both. Even still, they're going to get the density bonus because they're half a mile from the transit station if they decided not to have the five low-income units, let's just say. Would they still get the same density bonus just based on the location? No, they had to have the five units and the location to the transit station to get what they got and to get that .5 parking.
They have to have the restricted units, and they have to be within the distance to the, in this case, the Sprinter station in order to get the parking reduction. And as Scott said, it's the new law. It was previously a half a space per bedroom, and the state changed that and made even less to half a space per unit. They're complying with the half a space per bedroom.
Can I ask one point of clarification? Because this is what I read in the density bonus code, that that's the minimum, the maximum that's allowed for an affordable housing project like this. Two and three-bedroom units can provide up to 1.5 spaces per unit, correct?
The developer can go above what the state mandates. The state's, the state is mandating what the city can require.
I understand that part. I meant the maximum, because the code does set a maximum amount of spaces. So in the code, it says 1.5 spaces maximum per two and three-bedroom, or two and three-bedroom units, and I think it allows for 2.5 spaces for four bedrooms.
The city code?
No, this is the state code under the affordable housing. Public Resources Code 20, I forget what it is. I think it's 214, if I remember correctly. But I think my point is they could provide more under, there's nothing under the state, there's nothing under the state affordable housing provisions that would restrict them from providing up to 91 units or 91 spaces for 54 units based on the number of bedrooms proposed.
Ms. Hayes, I agree with you that the developer could provide more than they are if they wanted to, but the state law restricts the city's actions in this case, shall not impose a vehicle parking ratio that exceeds 0.5 spaces per bedroom, which has now been changed to unit. So the city's hands are tied in terms of how much parking we can require.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Goodkind, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say something about the permit parking process for the South Oak people who are in this meeting. Just for your information, if the process still works the way that it used to, you, you have to initiate that as residents of your street. You have to get a certain percentage of the residents on your street to sign a petition, and you take that to the city, and then the city reviews it. So there's a separate process for that. But that, so I just wanted to put that out there. And then as for the traffic, I think if the city is going to, you know, start, it's going to pick up the pace with these three- and four-story developments, South Oak could really benefit from, from some traffic calming measures. And I think that you guys should be seriously looking at those, whatever they are, traffic circles or, you know, other, I know you have a bucket and a menu of traffic calming things that can be done, and I think that maybe it's time to, to check those out.
Thank you. Any more comment from the planning commissioners? If that closes discussion, then can I get a motion?
Not for me.
You can make any motion you want.
Could I ask one more question? Because I think there's one thing I'm, I'm a little unclear about.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner Hayes.
Jeff, I know you keep saying that our, our hands are tied, that there's, there's nothing we can ask the developer to do. Is that true? Even if we voted like for them to go back and revisit and talk to the community, that there, there is very little that the city could actually do to stop it or to change it?
Chair and Commissioners, I don't believe I said there's nothing that you can ask the developer to do. I have said a couple of times that there's some restrictions on certain aspects of this project, including the waivers, that are difficult to deny, and the parking, which are difficult to deny. I believe the law allows you to address design and external appearance. You have a policy in your coastal zone, and I believe that there was even testimony regarding it that speaks to the new development must be compatible with existing development in the area. I would caution you not to deny a project based on that because, again, the state density bonus is difficult to deny unless there's a objective safety standard. But I think you can look at design and other physical features of the project without lopping off a story or reducing the units that are allowed per the state law. Scott mentioned that, and you even heard some testimony from some of the citizens, that the developer did modify the exterior. And some people are saying that's token and it's not important, but I think it is important that he, the developer tried to listen and modify, and staff worked with them to modify the exterior appearance. So there is some things he can do, but it's very limited.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I'd like to move that the, that staff's recommendation, as it's currently written, be denied and that we send this back for evaluation of the project being more compatible aesthetically with the South Oak community.
Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second? So can we vote on that? Commissioner Obama, are you in favor of that?
Well, I just kind of, I'm in a really weird place because I really liked, I really liked the project. I think it's a great project. I like the mixed-use part of the project. I like the rooftop deck on the third floor. I like, I like a lot of things about this project. I was really into it when I first started to read about it, but, but the parking is just gets me. And I know I can't say that, I know we can't vote against that. And to get five low-income housing units and then take this into the neighborhood that doesn't really want it, that to me is not getting a bonus at all as far as the neighborhood goes, and for getting five low-income units, I don't think that's worth it. So I guess just for that aspect, I'm not into the idea of, of this project. So yeah, aesthetically, it's, I have to say, it's not like it's bad, but I don't know where I sit. I kind of, I'm all over the map. I'm sorry I'm not more clear. I guess I'm just kind of on the fence. I like it and I don't like it. So I mean, I like, I like a lot of it, and I guess, to me, the parking is what throws me into a bad situation because it's, it's not working with this idea of taking public transportation, just like the gentleman said across the street. I like that project across the street a lot. I was very much in favor of that one. I thought that was a beautiful project, but it wasn't as dense as this one. So I'm kind of, and I love development and new development for our city is, is going great, so I'm really all for that, too. But this one just kind of like really, you know, really hurts the neighborhood too much for me. I don't know. I just don't feel it. So I'm just kind of feeling for, even though it's not, you know, I don't have anything to stand on other than I just feel for what, if I was living there, I would feel for them. I feel for what's going on with that parking situation. So I would probably not be in favor. I would vote, I would go along with my two other commissioners on denying this project.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
Echoing Louise, I really do like the project and, and knowing the area, and I can see we need more housing. I mean, there is zero doubt about that, and the developers, other projects I've seen on Cleveland, well done. I do, too. I think he's done a really good job with those. So I'm not opposed to this project, and I think it's the scale of it being adjacent to this neighborhood, and the ones, the one across the street is three stories. I just, I think the height is, and that's come up several, several times, and I know, Jeff, you said lopping off a story is, is not necessarily something we can do, but it's incompatible with everything else around it. So I would just, you know, encourage the developers and just let you know that I am not opposed to this project or what it brings to the community as far as housing and all of that. I just, I think it could fit more into the scale of that community. Listen to the neighbors a little more.
I agree 100% with what Commissioner Hayes just said, and that is why I made the motion on the basis of compatibility, because I understand the height and the, and the scale, the density and all that fits within regulations, but it's not compatible with the neighborhood. And I'm also not opposed to having housing in that location, but the, compatible, a project that's compatible with the surroundings would be appreciated. So can we vote on my motion, please, Mr. Chair?
I think we are. And I think, I think Louise voted for your motion, I believe. Would you like, how would you like to vote on the motion?
I vote for the motion.
I think, Commissioner Hayes, you voted for it?
I voted for it, yes.
And, and I'm voting against it, and I'll tell you why. It's, it's because, you know, you know, first off, I don't think it's fair. I mean, there's, there's things that we absolutely need in this state is housing, and we need affordable housing. And if, if, if we're going to vote, and the Sherry Mackin and, and, you know, who's against this project, she's the one that says we want development near the transit centers, and we need, we need development where, where not, you know, in the infills. This is what this is. So at some point in time, you're not going to make everybody happy. And it's, and for the people that live in South Oak, I get it. I mean, it's, it's, it's a compromise living in the state. We're not the ones, you know, I didn't make, we didn't make the rules, but as a planning commission, when I look at something, as long as a developer brings something that's legal and that's aesthetically pleasing, and I think this certainly is, the rule of law is they get to do what the law says, and that's why I'm against this motion. Is it perfect? No, but that's, that's my vote. So with that said, Director Hunt?
At this point, I have two yes votes and one no vote, and before Louise votes, staff needs direction on what is the, what is the incompatibilities so that those could be resolved or changed or fixed so that the project could come back forward.
Would it be appropriate for the maker of the motion to identify those?
Yeah. So I think in terms of compatibility, the height is, is probably the issue that came up most frequently. There's nothing else in the area that is that high, so it's just not compatible in terms of height. The, the density is incompatible with the character of the neighborhood, especially given that very, that setback variance on Freeman Street. And the parking, the parking situation affects the compatibility because those, those residential streets in South Oceanside are, are already full, as we heard the testimony this evening. So compatibility in terms of over, of fitting all the people and their cars into this space, but mostly height, height and the visual effect of having that setback removed. It's just not compatible with the neighborhood in terms of density and height. It's, it's out of scale with South Oceanside. Is that sufficient guidance, Mr. Hunt?
I believe I understand what your, the items that you referenced, yes.
Okay.
Is there, are there other items that the commission would like addressed?
In clarification, if we vote for this to be, you know, denied, is it denied without prejudice as far as like political, how they, how they have to come back and reevaluate this project and present it back? I mean, I don't, I'd like to see not too much pushback on the developer because I do appreciate what they're trying to do and what we need, but--
The motion would have to be made to deny without prejudice to allow them to come back with a similar project within a year. Otherwise, they have to wait a year if the project's not substantially different. The other option is if you deny it, then the applicant or anyone could appeal it to the city council.
Which probably moves it faster as far as the developer.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, and it's up to you, is you might ask the applicant if they have any response to what you just said.
Would the applicant like to address the issue on the table? While they're coming, while they're making that decision, Director Hunt, what happens if it's, it's?
Two-two.
It's two-two?
If the vote's two-two, then your bylaws state it's a continuance to the next planning commission meeting where there would be more planning commissioners present, which in theory could break the tie.
Would you like, you haven't voted yet, have you?
No, I haven't.
You have, you have three absences, but one of those absences is Commissioner Rains, who, as we discussed last meeting, will not be here at next meeting either. Commissioner Custer and Chair Rosales have not indicated that they will be absent next meeting.
I think that's, I think that a little bit more input, a little bit more input from the developer and from the community would be good. So I think I would probably support Commissioner, your, your motion, or you're like against, you're for it basically, but I'll go with, I'll do the two-two. I think I'm, I think that's better positioned for possibly everybody.
Mr. Chairman, you've asked the applicant to come forward.
Yes, sir. Yeah, one of the issues in response to this is, you know, the, the number of units and the--
Yeah, one of the issues in response to this is, you know, the number of units and the height. And having that fourth floor in the project is very important to the project program and keeping those units in the project. So it's not a, it's not feasible to remove that floor. So I mean, I think we'd want you to vote on it tonight. And, you know, we'd be looking at probably going ahead with it. But if we do 2-2.
The best you're going to do is the next meeting.
Well, if, not if you vote.
Or the worst you're going to do is you're going to lose it tonight. And then what's, and then it's, what, Director Hunt? If, if, depending on how Commissioner Balma votes, if she votes with the motion, then they come back, they come back with a new development?
The motion, as I understand right now, is to deny the project.
Correct.
And there was discussion about, given the opportunity for the applicant to come back, and there was discussion about denying it without prejudice. But I'm not sure the motion includes deny without prejudice. That was just a discussion item or a comment. So if the vote is 2-2, then your bylaws state it goes back or comes back to your next planning commission meeting. If the vote is to deny, if the vote is 3-1 and the motion to deny carries, then they would have to wait a year in order to bring it back to the planning commission, or they could appeal it to the city council. Unless you change the motion to include without prejudice. Then they could come back to the planning commission soon, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, correct. But the, the appeal option is still available, too, whether with or without prejudice. So I think, you know, we would want action taken on it tonight. It's unfortunate, there's only four planning commissioners, but.
Well, next meeting, there'll be at least two more. I mean, yes, I guess.
I'll go with, pardon?
So, Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest that you, at this point, you take a vote again. So you can be clear.
All right, we'll take a vote again. Commissioner Balma, are you, where are you on the motion to deny the development?
I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
I'm in favor of the motion, so.
Pardon me?
I am still in favor of the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Goodkind?
In favor of the motion.
And I'm against it.
So for the record, there's, it's a 2-2 vote. The motion was to deny the project. And the two votes against the motion are Commissioner Balma and Vice Chair Morrissey. So per your bylaws, we will reschedule it for the next planning commission meeting. You need to determine, I believe, well, you need to determine whether you closed public testimony or whether you will allow it again at the next meeting.
Well, I don't think anything new is going to come up. So I, are you saying that we can close testimony so that when the other commissioners come, we just vote on it? Or do we have to go through the whole? I mean, I would vote just to vote on it. I mean.
I appreciate public testimony. So I would say we should open that up again. And we should look at things like the vacation rental thing came up. There's things that they could put into this, this project that would help out with the neighborhood. That was one strong thing. And the idea of doing some kind of traffic calming for the neighborhood would be another, like, good thing for the neighborhood. There's some things that we heard that are feasible for this development. So yes, we have, we're stuck with what the state tells us. But maybe there's other things we can add that would help with the safety and the traffic and things like that in the neighborhood that might help it.
I had a quick question for the, for the applicant. Regarding the HOA, are they free to sell to an investor who then can put it on a VRBO? I heard that tonight. Is, I would say from a marketing point, if someone can do that, I think, I don't know, that's good for marketing, but not, not my deal.
Commissioner, yeah, just to clarify, we've reiterated this point again, is that we have a 30-day restriction in our CCNRs for short-term rentals. So any renting of units requires at least to be no less than 30 days. The issue that it came up at the, at one of the public hearings was that on a previous project, staff had provided us language that at the time, the city was discussing short-term rental. And so a provision was added in there that if the city adopted a measure that was less restrictive, that then the HOA could amend the CCNRs without having to get into a vote or a litigation issue amongst themselves. And so we already, we have that in every project we've ever built. We've built 20 projects in Oceanside since the late 90s. So that's not anything different.
So, so again, if you're going to rent it, it's got to be for 30 days or longer.
30 days, correct.
So it's, so it's not a short-term rental? Okay, thank you.
And for a for-sale product, FHA/VA has limitations on the percentage of investors that can be sold to in any project.
Okay. Well, that helps clarify that point.
What about the other idea with the commercial rentals being offered to a restaurant, which would be another traffic nightmare?
So the issue with the commercial is that it's going to be governed by the parking limitations that are there now. There's only 11 parking spaces.
So that's precluded.
So that would not happen.
So, yeah, so any applicant that comes in would have to obviously comply and show that they could provide the number of required parkings for whatever the end use was. We've left it open for that reason.
What about the traffic calming suggestions on some, on Alvarado or something right around there? There was something that people were like asking for. Is there any room in your budget?
Well, it's really more the city traffic engineering department to weigh in on that issue. And we discussed that measure with them. And at the time, there was no desire to have a traffic calming measure installed at that intersection, similar to what was down by the school location. But we hope that our fees that we pay for the traffic mitigation or something to that effect would go. But if the city traffic engineer feels it's not warranted, then it's not to be put in. Thank you.
That's our state of California for you.
So are we good?
So just for the record, we will continue this to the next meeting, which is, I believe, October 11th. So we do, we will not renotice it because we've declared the exact meeting. And we will work with the applicant to address these comments that we've heard to see if they're comfortable making revisions.
Okay, thank you, Rosales. Director Hunt, so appeal of city planners' determination, is that your bailiwick?
There are no appeal of city planners' determination.
Could we take your conversation outside the forum, please? Thank you. No worries. Yeah, good luck with your fight, absolutely. Okay, discussion, are we on discussion items then? So.
The other, Mr., pardon me, Mr. Vice Chair, there are no discussion items on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, sir.
So your next item is planning commissioners' reports.
Okay. So I have no report. Commissioner Balma?
I also have no report.
Commissioner Hayes?
No report.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Just one item. I wanted to reiterate the request that was made by Arlene Hammerschmidt at the opening of this meeting to continue the use of Zoom, as many cities around the state have chosen to do. I think it invites and encourages more public participation. And we do still have a pandemic on our hands. And I understand that the governor has signed an extension to, or renewed somehow the exceptions to the Brown Act that would allow us to continue using Zoom. So I, I support that idea. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hunt, if that's all on our agenda, I think. I'm sorry. Oh, Commissioner Hayes? Did I, did you have a report? I'm sorry.
I did not have a report this evening, but thank you.
It's clairvoyant. No, thank you. Thank you, Jolene.
So real quick, the city planners' report. On October 11th, you have the 25 St. Malo variants, which you continued previously to get more input from the applicant. We're also going to bring the Planning Commission 2022 calendar for approval. And we hope to have an item regarding the recently signed SB 9 bill, which is garnering a lot of attention. October 25th, you have Fire Station Number One, which is just across the street on Civic Center, and a Seagate gas station across from El Corazon Park. November 8th, you have a fourplex at 1611 South Tremont. And you have an emergency shelter, local coastal plan amendment resolution. It's just to adopt a resolution to send it to the Coastal Commission for certification. And then finally, we hope to have the 2021 legislation memo that we do annually with you regarding all the recent legislation. Going out to December 13th, at this time, we tentatively scheduled Ocean Camp, which was the old pavilions project on the former drive-in site. The city council, on the 29th, they have a workshop on community choice energy. And then on October 6th, the general plan community vision that this body reviewed will be taken to the council for their comments. And then there's a couple of other modifications to local coastal plan amendments as well. So those are your next agenda items.
And when are we going to have you not with us? Like, what's the day again?
My last day is December 17.
December 17?
Yes.
So I was going to say, I was, we're going to, I'm sure, wait till everybody gets here. But I just, I want to say, on behalf of my planning commissioners, it's been a pleasure working with you, Jeff. And we got to plan a party.
Yeah, we do. Something's got to happen afterwards.
I'm good with that. Just, just real quickly, I've got mixed feelings. I really like my job. I really enjoy planning, the intellectual challenge of deciphering language and implications and reviewing site plans. Granted, some days are better than others, but, you know, it's a job. But it's mostly, and it's not mostly, it's a matter of spending more time with family and my wife and taking advantage of traveling while I still can. And so that's, that's what it's all about. And likewise, I've enjoyed working with you guys, so.
You've done a great job. And you, you, this is a tough job, because, you know, just tonight is a really good example of what's happening in our state. And, you know, we have to, we're rule of law, we got to abide by the laws. And yet you have, you know, the local people. And you hate to hear that their way of life, the way that they've known it for 30 years, is changing. And that's what happens with change. And it's emotionally, it's tough to make those tough decisions. But we thank you for keeping us within the rails, because you helped me tremendously tonight. So thank you.
But just so you understand, staff doesn't necessarily agree with our recommendations we make to you, but that's a slippery slope you start going down if you just start making a recommendation because you don't like it or whatever.
Exactly.
Anyways, enough said on that.
Yeah, thank you. So we are adjourned? That's, all right.
Recording stopped.